We call the Monday, November 2nd council meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Eight present, zero absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Change in hearing, none. All entertain a motion for the consent items.
So moved.
Most have been made and seconded for the consent items discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Next we have open forum. And first off, we have Jason Butler. Jason, if you could just come to the podium, say your name and address, and then what you'd like to speak to the council about, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Okay. My name is Jason Butler. I'm from City Line Towing here in Wilmer. Our address is 137 Benson Avenue Southeast here in Wilmer. The reason why we're here tonight is that city bid is coming up for the towing contract. And there's a couple things that I just wanted to make aware. I've spoken with Mr. Felth about this, and he's been a help to it. I just wanted to bring it to the city's attention. Accidents are not part of the city tow, and this has never been a conflict before because there hasn't been a competition in the towing in Wilmer. What we're asking is if we can get our fair share of the accidents that happen in Wilmer. I mean, this is how we make our money. What we're asking for is the city's help to figure out a way to evenly divide that between the two of us. I don't know if we're in the right spot, or this is the right move to make, but it's a start. So that's what we have to see. I just wanted to make this whereof before the city bid was accepted. We are bidding the city bid. We're kind of well aware that we're going up against a 40-year-old company, and we don't know if we can get to that point. But that's not what we're here for. We're here about, is about the accidents. When I worked for the competition, the accidents are dispatched out as a city tow. And then at the scene, it's determined if it's a city tow or private tow, and goes back to the facility for the insurance companies. So basically, what I'm asking is if we can figure something out to split the private tow's between us and the competition. The unlawful ones are the ones that are breaking the law and all that stuff. That goes back to the city impound, which is part of the city tow. But the accidents turn into the private sector. So that's what I'm asking about.
Kevin, do you have the information you need to make an informed decision?
We can get the address and everything. We know. We'll work on a process, though.
Okay, and so we should make sure that gets back to Public Works Public Safety prior to, so they know what plan is there. Was that your intent, Chief Felth?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Next we have Carol Lammer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Carol Lammer at 1313 Ella Avenue. Tonight, I'm speaking in behalf as chairman of the Wilmer Downtown Development, and I would like to talk a little bit about the holidays parade. I'll hold it up here so that it can be seen by those in-house, as well as those watching tonight. It's coming up on November 21, and we're pretty excited about it. And first off, I want to thank the city. I guess we start with you folks here at the table for giving us some money towards it. It takes more than what's given to us, and so we're looking for stakeholders and donations and that type of thing we take from the city. We also take from individuals. And as I like to say, we also make use of time, talent, and treasures. So anyone that wants to volunteer, that would be great. And some of the things, just to let you know, that are going to be there, of course, it's the parade, and we encourage entries, like Mr. Christiansen's. Maybe his construction company people could be there. What you do have to have is lights on of some sort, because it is at night. We're doing the giveaways. This is designed to be a family event, so there aren't charges. And we usually give some little thing for the kids that come at the information booth. We've given the sparkly rings. We've given, you know, the things around the neck. We've done pins, many different, many different things. So again, we're having that. And then the different events on the streets or in the, you know, in some of the parking lots, the bouncies for the kids, the fire pits to make some mores, again, some of the animals, the reindeers, the penguin. And it's always amazing to me, this penguin stands about this high. When you see them on TV, they look like they're about this high. But anyway, it's kind of interesting. And we're having vehicles for kids to go into, like the SWAT vehicle, the ambulance, fire truck. Again, it's a kids' orientated. We're having a tree lighting ceremony down at Selvig Park. Hopefully, nobody falls in there, but we won't talk about that. That's why we have insurance, right? There will be luminaries out to show where some of the events are being held at. As I mentioned, the fire pits with smores being down there, looking to have people, hopefully, the downtown businesses put their lights on in their buildings and stuff, so we can see, "Let's light up downtown." There's going to be different restaurants and stuff that are open, some warm places that you can go in if it's going to be a cold night. And, you know, we talk about post-parade activities, because some people say, "Well, now what? We can do the parades done." And it's, there's entertainment at the barn. The Goodness is open. The Presbyterian churches have hot chocolate and cookies. And of course, then some of those adult beverages over at the Fox Hole Brewery, that will be open that evening as well. And of course, we couldn't have a celebration without Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. So they will be there, and pictures will be taken as kids come up to visit them. So again, I'm pushing for the holidays. I will take volunteers. And to those that are watching tonight, you can contact or call us at 320-222-2020, or look on our website at wilmerdowntowndevelopment.com. Again, thank you for giving us, giving us, meaning all of us for our city, and the time to announce this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for Wilmer. Appreciate that. Okay, next is the consideration of currency exchange application for quick funds and Bennett Ventures. Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, every year at this time, the city has been in receipt of currency exchange applications from a couple of businesses in town. They make application from the Department of Commerce, and then the Department of Commerce lets us know that we have an opportunity to take action on this. Pursuant to my recommendation here, I guess I'm going to suggest something different than that for council consideration. This is asking to hold public hearings, as we've done in the last 10 years, and nobody has ever showed up. These applications are automatically approved at the state after 60 days from the date of application, unless the municipality interferes with a resolution holding that up. After that time, to let our citizens make some comments, and we've not heard any, I think it's, well, it is, it's staff's recommendation to not hold these hearings anymore, and let them automatically be approved until such time as we hear some citizen concerns.
I'll make that a motion. Second.
Most have been made and seconded to not have the public hearing and allow the Department of Commerce to act on the licensure after the 60-day application discussion. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this something that other communities do, or are we going to be out there on our own doing this, doing it this way? Do you know?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've taken no poll to find out what other cities do, so I could not give you any answer.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could this not be in the consent agenda? Or show up somewhere there?
In the future.
Yeah, in the future, yeah.
That we certainly could. Let you know that they're being processed.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just wondering.
Attorney, do you have an opinion on this? City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not aware of other cities that take an active role in, at least the ones that we work in, I haven't gone out and polled other cities. But I'm not aware of other cities that are really active in the licensure of currency exchange businesses. The one thing I would say is, if you take no action, anytime the commissioner notifies the city, it will automatically be approved. The city essentially has a veto power, but if you don't do anything, it will be approved. As far as putting it on the consent agenda, it seems like it could be an issue just reading the statute, because if the city is going to consider it, it needs to give notice and conduct a public hearing, or at least provide the opportunity for citizens to come speak if the city's going to consider the issue. So certainly, you could take a position that you, as a city, do not care, as a city council, do not care to get involved in these licensure applications and just not do anything, but...
Would another option be to just notice us in the Friday memo, so that we knew that it came through? Would that be acceptable? Councilmember Ammon.
I have a question, Kevin. As far as the reporting, I'm not sure what the requirements are. I'm sure there's a lot of banking requirements on this. Is there any indication, or do we have access to, out of curiosity, to see how much funds are transferred out to other areas of the country, or out of the country?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do not have access to that. There's a full application at the state level that we could find out exactly what each business is charging on payroll checks and other details and what they cash, but not the transfer out to other nations, if that's what your concern is.
Yeah, I'm not interested in what they charge, or, yeah, I'm just curious, how much is leaving the area.
Okay, so there's a motion, I'm sorry, motion and second, discussion. Change in hearing, none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, same sign. The motion does carry. Consideration of playground equipment purchase. Mr. Rizendine.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, in front of you in your packet is information regarding a playground equipment purchase. We have been working on this process for the last couple of months. We have sought community input from our Community Ed and Rec Advisory Council. Staff members have put in a fair amount of time researching and deciding whether this was the equipment that we would like to place in our parks. We think it's a great opportunity for us to rehab some of the work that was done earlier this year related to taking out some of the playground equipment in our various parks. In front of you is a proposal to purchase playground equipment with the value of the playground equipment, freight, and installation charges of $142,462.71. That would purchase seven playground units that we would put in six city parks. Those six city parks represent a fair cross-section of our community parks. With 37 parks, you aren't going to get into every one of them, but these six parks are spread throughout the community, from the north to southeast to the west. So we think that this is a good opportunity for us to get some new equipment into our parks. Game Time Minnesota/Wisconsin Playground is the vendor that we have proposed using. That firm in the city of Wilmer belonged to a U.S. communities purchasing co-op that we've met the letter of the law, that Robert will do more research on to make sure that we are regarding the quotations and receiving two quotes for purchases of the sides, but it's staff's recommendation to move forward with this purchase of equipment. The dollars available to us come from park development resources and some leftover funds from current CIP purchases for the 2015 year. So as stated, it's staff's recommendation to move forward with these purchases with all things in place to make this happen. Stand for questions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded to approve. Councilmember Christiansen, followed by Anderson, followed by Ammon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you describe some of these to us? Steve, I was looking for pictures on here, and I didn't see exactly what they were.
I will. I will send those pictures. Description of them, they range in size from a very small unit that's going to go to Minnagasco Park, that's in a two-to-five-year-old range of climbing tube and some small apparatus to meet the needs of some daycare providers in the southwest sector of town. And up to, Ramblewood has two units that we plan to place at Ramblewood, one a two-to-five-age unit and the other one a five-to-12-age unit. That would come with many climbing factors. There's some shade on a couple of the units of the parks. The Gesh purchase and the Haddene purchase will have rough units that will provide some shading for the kids as they're climbing around on the apparatus. Not a lot of the swing sets and things like that that were taken out. Part of the purchases, they had to be units. We couldn't just purchase like a teeter totter or a swing set and those items. So they're pretty functional. We bought two of the same unit. We'll put one at Gesh and one at Haddene. I think the community will enjoy those. They're larger units. There's a lot of different fun activities on them. I will pull all these off the website and send them to the council tomorrow, the pictures of them, so you can see them. But the committee thought that they looked very enjoyable, even though we didn't have anybody represented in the two-to-12-age category making these decisions. We did have parents of children that age that were part of this, and we think it's a good deal for the community.
Councilmember Anderson.
Help me understand the financing a little bit. It's $142,000 and change, and they're giving us $87,000? Or what, what's our out-of-pocket on this?
Our out-of-pocket is that $142 and change. The equipment purchased had a value of just under $175,000. So the $87,000 grant that you see on the document that's in front of you, that's the cost share with the company that we're purchasing from. In other words, that's the discounted price of the equipment. Then the freight charges are about $11,000. So our costs are that same for the equipment itself. Our charge is the $87,000 plus, and then there's $11,000 freight charge, and then a $40,000-plus installation charge next spring. So Public Works, we did not think that Public Works could devote enough staff to get this equipment installed in a timely fashion in the spring of next year. So we thought it important to use the staff at the company to install this, and that will create a faster timeline and turnaround time for actual use of this equipment. Public Works will be there to do the concrete work and create some of the ADA aspects of the park and accessibility issues. So they'll work hand-in-hand, but most of the work of install will be done by the company. The financials of it, our CIP dollars available in the 2015 budget, there was $150,000 for park development, of which we've spent $65,000 currently. So we're using the remaining $85,000 of that resource. We had projects like North Swanson had a draining and warning track project. They also had a backstop replacement schedule. Westwind had soccer fields top dressed, and that work was just done today. So thank you very much to Dunix Corporation for getting that work done today. And then we had a few projects at the Aquatic Center for refinishing the slides and playground equa, or the play features at the Aquatic Center. Those dollars came in under, so we're asking to utilize the remainder of those project dollars to finish this purchase.
Okay, just one other question. We had authorized something earlier. Was it, was it the $98,000 expenditure, or?
The author, I'm sorry to interrupt. The authorization, Councilmember Anderson, was to move forward with the grant application and approval to get involved in this purchase.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ammon.
I didn't have any questions.
Well, I thought I seen your hand up. Any of the councilmembers? Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve, for the information. Wondering if the company coming out to do the install, are there added warranty benefits to having them do that?
The warranty stays intact. I don't know as much that there's added warranties to it, but the warranty that is from the purchase of the equipment is in place because of their installation. And that way, it'll be, it'll also give Public Works an opportunity to view the work they do in case that we want to purchase things from them in the future, we might get into the install. They also do some community builds, so as we move forward in the future, there might be some opportunities for us to work towards that process as well.
Thanks.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this is a good start.
Thank you.
I did have a young couple talk to me about Barcel Park. Must have taken a big slide out of there, one of the big old tall ones.
I believe that to be true.
And there's a small one now, and it's really hard for little kids to get up into it. Must be a chain ladder or something.
Okay.
Check on that and see. Since I didn't see that this would be one of the parks, I wouldn't be getting anything, so I would appreciate that.
Will do.
Thanks.
Just some questions. Steve, I want to thank you and your staff for the direction that council gave you to look at grant opportunities, so thank you for doing that. We appreciate that.
Our pleasure.
Leveraging those dollars really is to the benefit of our community, so. And then my understanding, and what I heard you say, is that you're going to have the city attorney look at the legalities of it, because it's basically purchased off a consortium. Is that what it is?
The purchasing co-op, yes, so.
So does that meet the intent?
Laid information to the attorney, and I think it behooves us to make sure that his process has been followed appropriately as well.
Those making the motion and seconding, okay with adding that?
Yes.
Favorable review from the city attorney? And this being that dollar amount, it takes a resolution, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Consideration of new premise permit for New London Spicer Booster Club at Ruff's Wings and Sports Bar. Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a request for the New London Spicer Booster Club to have pull tabs and other legal items for gambling at Ruff's Wings and Sports Bar located on Highway 12 Southeast. The unit of government must authorize the premise permit application, and we have a resolution approved submitting it to the gambling control board, and if it's a council desire, asking them to approve the permit for that activity.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Most have been made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I have no problem with booster clubs having pull tabs, but I want to make sure that the groups from Wilmer had a chance to have pull tabs at Ruff's first, because this money will be going to Booster Club for New London Spicer. And previously, I had talked about Rack 8, where there's a lot of programs from New London Spicer that are on our access channel, and they don't pay a fee. But I was told that it's a regional access, but this money will be going to New London Spicer, and I'd like to see Booster Clubs in Wilmer get it. Can we find out if anybody had asked Ruff's from Wilmer and were denied?
We certainly can hold this action up and find out what it, if any, history is there. Normally, they just wait for someone who's willing to take on those duties, which is a lot of work, and they would just acquiesce to their demands, should they want it, in a small space in the restaurant. But we can hold up and ask some details.
All right. I'd appreciate that.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many clubs in Wilmer are actually doing this? Doesn't the hockey have pull tabs somewhere also, or a baseball team in Wilmer?
We probably have four out there.
And I believe.
We'd have to leave them. We no longer authorize them. Statute changed about four years ago. We used to authorize them every two years, and so it was more in our forefront of where they are. But now it's just the first time you allow it, and then they automatically renew.
They're all there.
Eagles, they're all, they're all over the place, but they're, they're not, to my recollection, any outside activity like the New London Spicer group to date. This would be the first one.
Well, you don't get it unless you ask, and they must have asked.
Correct.
Councilmember Fagerly.
I know a few years I asked at KEC, and it's a Mankato Club project there that has pull tabs.
Is it?
And I didn't think that was right, but there's nothing we can do about it.
I don't recall that.
I think the Curling Club there at the Oaks, the hockey used to be, but I think the Curling Club is someplace. Oaks or the Elks.
Now, what if we do an inventory of what we've got?
And then you got the Legion and VF and the Eagles, but that's for their own.
Mr. Mayor, move to table. Takes a motion.
Motion to table. Is there a second to the ta?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All in favor of tabling the discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion is tabled. For more information. Consideration of deferred special assessments for senior citizens or disabled persons. Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pursuant to the city conducting an improvement program, which we have, the 2015 street and other improvements carried out this year, there is statute which allows local governments to defer assessments for those senior citizens who qualify by income on homesteaded property. You have a resolution before you listing three homeowners who have qualified and desire to defer this payment, and it is staff's recommendation that we adopt the resolution, deferring these payments until such time as the property changes hands or it loses its homestead category.
So moved.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded to consider the deferred special assessments discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Abstain.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
The resolution passes. Next we have consideration of certification unpaid utility charges as a lien. Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, every year at this time, the city receives a letter from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commissioners indicating that they have held a hearing on various homeowners who have failed to make payments for their utilities. They offered a hearing for those people to come and offer testimony as to why they should not have this dollar amount assessed as a lien against their property for the next year. Nobody showed up for those hearings, and it was their letter mailed to me, asking that the city certify the unpaid utility liens on the list you have before you for collection in full in the year 2016. And it is staff's recommendation that we adopt the resolution to carry that out.
Move to approve.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded to approve the certification of unpaid utility charges as a lien. Discussion. Councilmember Ammon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, do you know if this includes the down payment that was made for the individuals? If that's built into this cost and is already taken out of there, or is it added to? If you use deposit before you apply for electricity.
This, this would be net. So if they made a deposit of $80 or whatever those deposits are, this is above that, so.
Do we also know, Kevin, how many of them are rental properties versus single-family homeownership?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there should be zero rental properties. A landlord will not be held responsible for a renter's utility charged against it, only the homeowner. So those are written off as part of the fee structure for anything from a rental unit, as you know, which is climbing every year and getting to be a higher percentage. But the answer should be zero.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution does pass. Next we have consideration of on sale intoxicating three Resolution does pass. Next, we have consideration of on-sale intoxicating 3.2 liquor license Team House Hibachi Grill and Buffet. Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have received an application for an on-sale intoxicating 3.2% liquor license from the Team House Hibachi Grill and Buffet in the Candy Mall. The police department has completed the background check, criminal history check, and all the driving records, and everything is found to be in order. And it is staff's recommendation that the council approve this liquor license concluding in line with all the rest on April 25, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to approve the on-sale intoxicating 3.2 liquor license discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ahman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution does pass. Just for the council's information, I was there for an open house ribbon cutting on Friday and had dinner there in a very nice place. It looks pretty much the same, but the food was excellent. So I would encourage all councilmembers to stop out there and give it a try. Next, we have consideration of on-sale intoxicating 3.2 liquor license Panda Garden. Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city is in receipt of an application from Panda Gardens for a 3.2% liquor license, and the police department has completed the background check and criminal history check and all other checks and everything seems to be in order. It is staff's recommendation that we also approve this 3.2% on-sale intoxicating liquor license to conclude April 25, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to approve the on-sale intoxicating 3.2 liquor license at Panda Gardens. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ahman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And the resolution does pass. Next is consideration of preliminary plat, the Gibby Edition. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, Gibby Edition is a one-lot replat of some existing property in Eagles Landing Phase Two. It includes a portion of an existing lot and an entire lot plus a portion of an outlot owned by Adam and Holly Gibson. The purpose of the land is, or the land lot combination is to allow room for an attached garage to be added to the premises so that they can meet setbacks. The planning commission has reviewed and approved the preliminary plat and it's a recommendation of staff that the council approve the preliminary plat with no conditions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to approve the plat called Gibby Edition. Where's this located at? And we don't have the overhead for that?
I had assumed there would be. That is my air. Megan did not submit it with the request for committee action. It is property at the west side of Eagles Landing Phase Two that borders the county road. There's an outlot along the county road that separates it from the trail and they are purchasing a small portion of that outlot.
Council discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The motion does carry. Thank you. Next, we have the announcement of committee meeting dates. Finance.
Finance will not meet on Monday, the 9th. No finance.
Public Works, public safety.
Tuesday, the 10th, 4:45, City Hall.
Labor.
4:45, Thursday, November 5th.
And that'll be a simple committee meeting?
It'll be a committee meeting, closed session, and we have one item to take care of on the agenda, which I talked Mr. Halliday about today, and that was on the insurance policies, payments, and the responsibilities that employees and the cities, shared responsibility. There's some discrepancies between the two amounts, which is very minimal, and Kevin's going to explain that and we need to clarify that if it's going to be part of policy. After that, there will be a closed session.
Community development.
Thursday, November 12, 4:45 at City Hall. Could be a busy day.
Could be a long day. Okay. Other items to come before the council? In other words, I have a couple. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's recently come to my attention that we have some residential facilities in town for housing sex offenders that have been released from prison on parole. I also suspect that these facilities would be available for the release of sex offenders that have been civilly committed and are eventually released on a conditional provisions under the Minnesota Commitment Act for sex offenders who are considered psychopathic personalities or sexually dangerous persons. And my concern is, is I, these things, I didn't, I wasn't aware they were in the community. I'm not necessarily, I'm not opposed to that necessarily, but I do think that we should be looking at ways that we can determine where they locate and so on, just like we do for other, under our zoning laws, for other uses, property uses. And along those lines, I would propose a motion that the city attorney review what our options are, what would be legal, appropriate, and what the scope could be of possible zoning provisions that would regulate the location of these residential living facilities for sex offenders or released civil commitment persons. And that we know what we can, in other words, what we can do and what we can't do. Like I say, I don't think there's any desire to exclude them from the community. We need some of these facilities, but I would like to know where they are and when they come here and so on. We do have legal notice requirements now when level-three sex offenders are released from prison and are going to enter a community, but, and those are handled by the police department. And they do an excellent job on that, but it doesn't track in the real estate records. And I would also like to have the city attorney as part of this motion explore the possibility of some kind of a procedure that would result in a legal notice of affected properties, where they're located and the affected property is within so many feet, so that those are recorded in the tract index so that when we have sales of property, people don't get blindsided with, buy a house and find out that they're living next to a facility where there are level-three sex offenders residing. I think that's a little bit disconcerting when it happens, especially if the family has young children. So I'd like to have the, my motion is to have the city attorney explore just what our options are with respect to zoning requirements that we might be able to legally impose that are reasonable, but provide a little bit more depth and a little more notice to the public, so.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded to have the city attorney explore options as it relates to, are you speaking specifically of level-three sex offenders or any sex offenders?
I think any sex offenders because the facility would hire, would house different levels. And also, we have, there is a civil commitment process in Minnesota, like in other states, where certain sex offenders, after their prison term expires, rather than release them from prison, the prosecuting authorities civilly commit them. And I don't know if, you know, I felt, we currently have a major challenge to that process in Minnesota going on in our federal courts. Judge Donovan Frank in Twin Cities is presiding over that case and that lawsuit's been pending for, oh, gosh, I think that's been going on for a couple of years now at least. And he made a ruling yesterday that I haven't seen that gave the state some time to decide how they're going to handle the really pending release of, I can't remember the number, of so many people that are under commitments and being held at either Moose Lake or St. Peter, Minnesota, in our secure facilities for holding those people. And I just think that we should be looking at that too because there's been a, the challenge pending in federal court on the civil commitment part of this is, the action is to have the process found unconstitutional. And based on the prior rulings and announcements that have been made by the federal court that's presiding over this, they don't like what's going on. They don't think it is constitutional. We're holding people too long, not providing treatment. Those are just some of the general allegations. I don't have the details, but we could be faced with, there's approximately 700-plus people being held subject to civil commitment for either having been found to be a psychopathic personality or a sexually dangerous person. And it could be that we'll start seeing a release of a lot of these people. So far, I don't think there's been more than one or two people released in all the years that that program has been in effect. And with the way that pronounced in so the federal court, I think that's going to change until we'll start seeing more releases. And in the meantime, we do have people that are, been sentenced for sexual offenses, been in prison and are being released on parole. And they do, the Department of Corrections does provide intensive supervision for these folks as part of this process, but I think, I just think we should know where they're at and what's going on. It's not that it's a secret, but it's, it's not real easy to find out either, so.
Attorney Scott, do you understand the intent of the motion?
I do, Mayor.
Okay. Additional discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion signify by the same sign. The motion does carry. We have a board of canvas. If you want to put this on your calendars, please. That will be on November 12 at 2:45 at City Hall. 2:45?
2:45.
I'm sorry, 12:45.
12.
12:45. That'd be bad, 2:45. Stop the interviews. Okay. Then, just for the residents of Wilmer, we do have an election on November 12 for Ward Four. Please remember to get, November 10, Ward Four. Got too many numbers written in front of me. November 10, Ward Four. Please get out and vote, so research your candidates and vote well. So anything else for the good of the order? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. We are adjourned.